August fifteenth meeting of the Harney County Board of Commissioners to order. Like to welcome everyone and also ask that you please silence all electronic gadgets. At this time, we will have our pledge of allegiance and our invocation led by Commissioner Mark Johnson.
Stand face to blackwood. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing and pray with me, please. To heaven and the Father, we come to you tonight as a group of people. We're here to express our concerns. The county is here, officials are here to make decisions. We ask that you help us make the right decisions for the right reasons. Pray for everybody in this room and their families. We still have a lot of concerns about health issues going around us. And Father, we ask you to please come in and touch us and keep us healthy. Father, we ask you to be with us if we have any main concerns. Only you and the person know about, please help us with that. We ask all these things in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. All right. At this time, are there any additions or deletions to the public agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda as published.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye. All right. The consent agenda. Any changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. All right. This is a special part of the program. I'm going to ask Dr. Combs if he will come forward. And I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if they will join me down here in front of the dais. It's my honor and pleasure to present this proclamation honoring Tucker Ryan Combs for his appointment to the United States Senate Page Program. Bear with me, I'm going to try to get through this. Whereas Tucker Ryan Combs at Harney Central High School was formally appointed by Senator Richard Burr to serve as a United States Senate Page for the fall semester of 2022. And whereas the United States Senate maintains and operates the Page Program, which seeks to educate, recognize, and offer exceptional high school students for the once in a lifetime opportunity to serve amongst the state's body. And whereas the United States Senate Page Program provides a unique privilege of working on the Senate Chamber floor in the midst of legislative action. And whereas the United States Senate Page Program allows these students to continue their education in a very prestigious and intense United States Senate Page School in the morning and then serve in the Capitol during the work day. And whereas there are only thirty students selected from across the entire nation to be part of this esteemed program. And whereas the Harney County Board of Commissioners congratulates and encourages our students who are involved in unique opportunities and represent our community with integrity and honor. And whereas through hard work, dedication, and commitment, Dr. Ryan Combs otters upon himself Harney Central High School, Harney County School District in Harney County. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Harney County Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere gratitude to you who respect Dr. Ryan Combs for his outstanding achievements and inspiration to youth in Harney County and across the state of North Carolina. All right. At this time, we will have a public comment period. I need two people to sign up. Each person will be allowed three minutes. Please direct your comments to things that the Board of Commissioners have control over or things that are on the agenda. Please refrain from personal attacks. First person is Ms. Doritha Brown. Ms. Brown's not here. Okay. All right.
Yes, my name is Alan Longman. I'm from two thirty-four Hamilton Road, bond level. Reason for my talking today is to congratulate you for how you handled during the work period for the building and the lack of water the county has. You need to have a master plan. The county needs to have a master plan to go by to slow down development until the infrastructure catches up. That's one. Second, I come to talk about the Board of Elections. We have someone who's the director. And there's some laws that have been broken that have not been addressed. I want them addressed. They're legal. There's also a lot of bad things going on. I have two, actually three signs. One destroyed, two signs missing that were stolen. The other thing is, the candidate had his mailbox blown to bits and he lives in a place that's hard to get to, so you have to know where he is, which only leaves a few number of people that could have found him. So I don't want things getting messy, but I do want the law enforced. If you have a person in law enforcement that's supposed to enforce the law here, he needs to enforce the law and stick to the state statutes, which have been broken. So the complaint was made official. I'd like to see something moved up on it. Claire, the Director of Election Board, has not done anything. And we've had problems with this where she's constantly blowing off whatever the chair or the other people say, never addresses a problem, and always takes the wrong side of the situation, usually the side that's definitely not right, conflict of interest constantly. I would like to see the law enforced and her to do her job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longman. No one else has signed up, so I will close the public hearing or public comment period at this time. And we will move to item seven on the agenda, a presentation from the Sand Hills Antique Farm
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and guests. I'm Alvin McMartin, President of Sand Hills Antique Farm Equipment Club Incorporated. It's good to be with you and give an annual report as agreed when we signed our contract with the county in two thousand nine at the end of Alexander Drive, we have developed a farm park. This year, we are celebrating our twenty-second anniversary of the life of the club, organized in two thousand, with about seven families, and now we've grown to seventy families. If you look on the screen, that's a diagram of the park, the layout of the park. Our goal is to educate young and old and of the past, present, and future of the life on the farm. One of the ways we do this is conduct ag science days in the spring and the fall. We do two days in the spring in March for fifth graders, two days in the fall for fifth graders. And by doing this, we can include all fifth graders in Harney County through these ag science days. We also give two scholarships a year for students that have the grades to, that qualify with the grades. These FFA members are going to proceed to further their education in ag science farming or whatever it is on the farm. So these scholarships help these guys some. And also, we do camp scholarships for two students in each school, each high school in the county. And the ag advisor in each school picks the students to go. Most of the time, students are not able to go unless they have help. So we're happy to do that. We also contribute to the four H clubs and give them their donation to help them with their programs. We have two shows at the park. First one is in March, Old Timey Farm Days, and the second one is in October, it's called Swap Meet. Last year, we participated in our two shows at the park, who were Ag Science Days, shows we attended. We went to the Sanford Show and participated in their show. We did the Lillington Street Fest in September, Classic Farm Days in Benson in April. We do demonstrations there. We do the demonstration that got to be North Carolina in Raleigh in May. We do hayrides and park parties in churches. Also, one hundred years of progress in Carthage. We do the demonstration for them. We do the parade in Broadway in Lillington, Christmas parade. We'd like to invite you all to join our club. It's only thirty dollars a year for a family. One person pays the dues and everybody in the club, in the family, that lives under the same roof is a member. Also, come out to see us and you won't see, you'll see things that our shows that you won't see anywhere else in Harney County. And you'll meet some of the friendliest people in Harney County. We draw people from several counties as far as South Carolina and Virginia and all around. So you see a lot of different people from a lot of different areas. We are a five oh one C tax exempt organization, and any donations you make to the club can be tax exempt for you. Again, thanks for all your support. County Commissioners have been very supportive of our organization, and we appreciate it. Also, again, I was asked by some of our members if you would consider withdrawing this hundred-dollar permit fee every year that we have to pay to the county for the hundred dollars for our permits. And we feel like we are donating enough to our county in what we do, all our people are volunteers. So if you could consider that, we appreciate it. Thank you for your time, come to see us, and God bless you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Any of my fellow commissioners have a question or comment? I would like to ask Mr. Trout, could you put discussion on that fee on our work session?
Yep, we'll find out the details.
Anyone else have anything? Thank you, sir.
I forgot to say that I've got my members here all out, but thanks for coming, guys.
Glad to have all of you. Thank you. All right. Moving to the next item on the agenda. Mr. Sykes, you're going to present this?
Yes, sir. That's me tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. Jay Sykes with Development Services presenting our first case, which is a rezoning. It's a request to rezone approximately nine and a half acres from RA forty to RA thirty. The owner is Mr. Donnie Carroll, Contracting and KMB Building. The applicant is Malden Watkins Surveying, both two representatives tonight from the survey as well as the owner. This is on Matthews and Tripp Road in the Niels Creek Township. Site is currently vacant farmland as per the application intent is for this independent home builder to construct residential homes. Again, vacant agricultural land is in the area as well as a single-family stick-built residential structures, a few manufactured homes, several developments in this area or within Lillington's jurisdiction, as you can see there outlined in the red, and the majority of those have been taken in and rezoned to RA six into Lillington's jurisdiction. And then out towards NC two ten is a bit more of a higher density development of our Homes built on this site, however, would be utilizing public water and private septic. Traffic is unavailable. Traffic numbers are unavailable along these two roads, but site distances are good. As you can see there is a mix of RA forty and RA thirty in the area. And then the land use classification is medium density residential as well as a development target area over four oh one, which is just to the south. Looking at evaluation, the impact to the surrounding community is reasonable as the requested zoning district is similar in nature to the surrounding area. The requested rezoning to RA thirty is compatible with overall land use classification of medium density residential as being within that compatibility development target area. Medium density residential land use classifications could have lot densities that range from two to five units per acre. Within the vicinity also is distinctive growth patterns to the renewable growth area. And along this road, rezoning requests have been previously approved within the Matthews Road and south of Tripp Road. The request to RA thirty would maintain the public health and safety and general welfare due to the existing residential uses. And since the, due to compatibility and the land use, compatibility as well as the zone district being across the street, it does not need to be evaluated for a small-scale rezoning. At their August first Planning Board meeting, Harney County Planning Board voted unanimously four to zero to recommend approval based on compatibility of land use plan as well as existing uses in the area. Planning Board members discussed coordination of services that are offered by the county as well as Lillington utilities, fire, EMS, due to the adjacent jurisdictions in the area. Also discussed was potential higher density that could have been achieved if this site was annexed into the town. One citizen did speak in opposition, and her concerns consisted of school overcrowding and just the overall amount of growth that the county is experiencing. In response to that, Planning Board member did encourage this individual to seek out the school board and extend her concerns to them. So therefore, stated in evaluation, RA thirty zoning district is compatible and would maintain the public health, safety, and welfare based off of the existing residential uses as well as compatibility with the land use plan. Staff would recommend approval. Available for questions? And then, as I said, there are two representatives from the applicant as well.
If it's RA thirty, that means thirty thousand square foot lots maximum, right?
Yes, sir. Well, maximum, it could obviously go harder. Typically, that's what, the biggest difference between RA thirty and RA forty would be a difference of the lot width, one hundred and fifty feet of road furniture versus a hundred feet of road furniture. With public water, there's a five thousand square foot break, so you'd probably be looking at twenty-five in a thirty thousand square foot lot versus a thirty-five to forty thousand square foot lot.
So how many homes per acre are we talking? One per acre?
One, one point two.
Yes, sir. It's my understanding it'll do, what's planned, and of course, it's just a thought right now is a minor subdivision versus a major, and they would all be just standard lots on the road.
So we're talking nine or ten homes? Is that what it is?
If it goes the minor route, it would only, it would be a max of five. If they do do the major subdivision with public water, yes, sir, probably double that.
Have you thought about if you're going the minor subdivision route or are you going regular full sub?
You're doing a minor.
You're doing a minor? Okay. So you're limited to five homes? Any other questions for staff or the applicant? At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this request, please come forward. State your name and your address, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm Wayne Malden with Malden Watkins Surveying at one thirty-nine North Main Street in Fuquay. We put the petition together, she have it for you tonight. I'm not going to go back over. I think Jay did excellent job of going through all the ifs and ands, but we do meet all the county rules and the land use plan. Basically, all that stuff that's been annexed into Lillington's jurisdiction is going with little bitty lots and water and sewer. My clients and Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, they've had this property since December. And as we all know, the sewer hadn't come about yet. So they're small builders, they're not a big developer. They've been hanging on to it almost a year. They're ready to do something with it. All we're asking for is to go from RA forty to RA thirty, which will make the lots a little bit narrower. Most of the lots in that area are twenty thousand to twenty-five with some of the bigger ones. Going to thirty thousand, we're still going to have the biggest lots in the neighborhood. We're just not going to be from the smallest lots to the biggest lots. We're not going to have the big gap. So we get more in line, more uniform with what's in the surrounding neighborhood. So we will be using county water, and we will be doing a minor subdivision. So if any of you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Malden?
No, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else wish to speak for or against?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. I'm Keith Brown. My company is the KMB Building LLC. Mr. Carroll's out of town. But yeah, the reason for doing is like Jay and Mr. Maldens already went over, going smaller lots gives me like one more lot, you know, in the long run of this. We're not a big builder, but you know, we've been building in the county for twenty years. I got my contractor's license when I was twenty-five. My first house was in Anger, and I built it in Lillington. And we built a small house. Like, most of our clients are first-time home buyers, people going to Campbell University. We've had some mothers, you know, that's single moms, and we get a lot of people that want to downsize and are, you know, getting elderly, you know, they're wanting to not have us upstairs. So we do a lot of small ranches, and that's what'll be coming to this area. They're fourteen hundred square feet, they're three bedroom, two bath. We built a nice house. I mean, I've been doing it twenty years in this area as a contractor, and we try to have a little bit of room between the houses. I don't like the RA sixes, RA ten, it's a little tight for our houses. You know, we like to have a little bit of yard on the sides. And by going from forty to thirty allows me pretty much one lot over the duration. And we don't have enough money to put a lot of streets in and do some of the stuff, and they've been talking about sewer, but you know, it might not be this year. When you spend two hundred and some thousand for the land, eventually you've got to start getting your money back because things get a little tight, especially not knowing what our economy is going to do now. So we do some small houses and try to give a little bit of yard. Most of the houses have what are about thirty feet on each side, I think, is what we get. So we have about fifty, sixty feet between the houses so that people get a little bit of yard. You know, that's what we're looking to do here, at least by starting and doing five lots. That helps me get my money back out of the land and, you know, gives me an extra lot later on if I come back for another minor later. But that's what we're looking to do over the years. We build a lot of little houses. Like I said, they're fourteen hundred square feet. They accommodate, you know, the young and the old, and that's what we're trying to do here. We try to They accommodate, you know, the, the young and the old and that's what we're trying to do here. We, we try to make them nice and do a little. And being a small builder, we're able to do some things that other builders ain't. In the house we do granite and a few upgrade things that we do personally ourselves. But, but that's the only reason for going from the RA thirty to forty is maybe to get an extra lot or two, just to help us out.
All right. Any, any questions from anyone?
I have a question. Did I understand you say you didn't have enough money to do the roads?
Like to put a subdivision in, I'm not a big enough builder to do like the development, you know, to put like streets in and do a lot of houses. You know, so you know, that's why we do more like a minor subdivision where we only have four or five lots.
So you're not going to have any street, you're not, you as a subcontractor not even going to put the streets through there?
Excuse me, I didn't hear you.
Streets?
No, we're not going to put a street in. It'll just be, because we got, it's a, we got a lot of road fronters, so we're just going to do four like down the road.
So they're going to border the?
Trip Road.
So they're not going to run a street through the middle? What he's saying, they're going to utilize access to Trip and Matthews Road for those homes that they build.
Okay, back to that. Didn't quite understand that, so. All right, thank you.
So all these houses will, will front either Trip Road or Matthews Road, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And when you say that your market is like Campbell students or I guess seniors that are wanting to downsize or something?
That's, that's majority of what we sell because it's a small home. It's fourteen hundred square feet. There's three bedroom and two bath. It's real open like when some of the plans are coming in, it's like family room, kitchen, you know, all, and we do like all LVP flooring in the house. Only carpet is in like the masters. We trim them real nice because I do the trim myself, so we can do a little bit extra in the trim and, and stuff like that to make them nice. But most of our clients are seeing, most of the people I've sold to, I don't, if y'all familiar with going to the landfill on Turnleton Road, there's five houses right on the left now. I did, I did M five. As you're leaving town right here in Lillington on four twenty-one, on old four twenty-one, there's five on the left side right there that I put in and then two on the right. We done a couple over here on James Street in Lillington. Like I said earlier, we done some of Wettstone subdivision years ago. Right now we're, we're building some in Dunn, some in Irwin. We have a couple lots coming on Maduville Road out here. We're buying from Mr. Jim Brown. We're going to do a few out here. And we're just trying to do the small houses, you know, that's two hundred and thirty thousand, two forty, some things that you can't find right now. If you look for a two hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred thousand dollar house, they're hard to find. You know, and that's what we're trying to do is, is do some smaller homes that people just aren't out can afford. Like I said, we get some that have maybe one kid, but we don't get a family because his house just ain't big enough. But we're kind of building the starter homes and, you know, homes for people that are wanting to, you know, don't have no stairs no more and they want to kind of make the house just a cap capable for them to keep up with.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against this request? Seeing no one?
For small business, especially contractors. But you have to set a limit. I don't know if the laws are that big contractors could start building small areas and then act like they're a small corporation and get approval for that. I like to see basically problems addressed by the commission about the school systems, about the water and about the septic, that some plan be designed and also berating what you're building and giving out building permits. I want to see limitations on that fear that once you got some people building, even though they're legitimate and good to be small, they could, the larger corporations operate the same manner. I'm afraid that they'll operate in small groups. At least to get the things, projects going in some way. And I, I think overall that defeats what you need to do. You need to get the water, you need to get the schools and you need the septic. In the long run, it would be a much better community because the problem everyone makes is the same. They go out and they build and the place gets to be overcrowded, urban squirrel. You have water problems, you have septic tanks ruin the groundwater. And you have this happen everywhere. So the point is people end up moving out after so many decade, a decade or two, they're, they're out there moving because they got problems built up that were never handled and became too much for the county. So I'd like to see a master plan and something brought to a head where you have a plan to take care of these problems because they seem like they stay the same. And if you need more money from the state, there must, there must be a way of talking to Mr. Bergen or Mr. Penny and see what could be done to help out. You do need a lot of help, I assume. There's a lack of water. If there's a drought, how does that affect everything? I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longman. Anyone else? Seeing no one move to come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing. And any comments or questions from the commissioners? It sounds to me like what they're proposing is what we've been asking for, affordable homes. Based on that and based on the fact that the planning board recommended approval of this, I make a motion that we approve this request. If you look at what's around it, it's a breath of fresh air almost looking, looking at everything else that's around it. So that's, that's my motion that we approve this. Motion is second. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries four oh. Thank you. All right, Mr. Sykes.
Yes, sir.
Another request for rezoning here.
Yes, sir. This is our second of two items tonight. This is a request looking at the land use map amendment. Of course, our land use plan is our overall guiding document and underneath that is, is the zoning districts. So we, a lot of the regular, uh, development regulations are tied to the land use plan as well as the underlying zoning district. So this is a request to look at two hundred and fourteen acres and to amend the map and plan from agricultural and rural residential to medium density residential. The owner is Lloyd Enterprises. Applicant is Mr. Tom McKay. This is located on NC twenty-seven west in the barbecue township. Right across from, uh, Western Harnett High School, Middle School and Barbecue Park. In the area is predominantly RA twenty R with some RA thirty back to the east. They're heading back into Lillington. Agricultural and rural residential and low density are the predominant land use classifications as you see there. The agricultural and rural residential goes near about from Lillington's jurisdiction all the way towards barbecue. And then back all the way up towards old four twenty-one. The lower density is sprawls down towards Buffalo Lake and then it starts to change around Erickson Creek Club. Property is currently vacant and undeveloped land. Surrounding land use is consistent with single family residence. Middle and high school, county park, several undeveloped parcels. Per the application, this request is to assist in residential development while also preserving the environmentally sensitive areas of these two tracks. Public water and public sewer would be utilized as approximately sixty-two hundred vehicle trips per day. Looking at this request, staff found the following, that the impact to the surrounding community is unreasonable. It's predominantly low density residential area. The requested land use classification is not compatible with the surrounding land use districts. Nor is it adjacent or in the vicinity of the requested classifications. The proposed land use classification could potentially be an inconvenience to the area since the classification would be a higher density development. Higher density development without an adjacent street connectivity could lead to issues with the existing transportation network. The uses and density provided by the current zoning and land use classifications are more appropriate for this area. With the amount of our environmentally sensitive areas that could exist, low density classification may be more appropriate. Also at the August first planning board meeting, those members voted unanimously for to recommend denial of this land use amendment based on it not being compatible with the land use plan as well as the precedent that the commissioners have set by looking at other map amendments. Also, planning board members discussed, staff discussed, and we, we talked about it briefly at our last work session. As these requests came in, trying to be more of a, a long-term review, again, because it is more of a broader scope versus just looking at it as individual parcels from the from those rezonings out of things. So the planning board also thought that was a good idea. The existing ag and rural residential classifications provide flexible amount of development for the options existing. Potentially higher density could create a lot of traffic issues for this area that only DOT could regulate. Smaller setbacks in lot sizes in a rural area could create an issue for fire safety and response times. The amount of environmentally sensitive areas is concerning and needs to be protected and discourage development from encroaching upon its boundaries. An engineer for the applicant stated approximately ten thousand square foot lots would be their target. Looking at anywhere from between three twenty-five to three hundred and thirty homes. One adjacent landowner did speak. He was adjacent parcel that's landlocked and just wanted to have connection to his property if it's developed in the future. So therefore as discussing evaluation and the points of, of a review, staff would recommend denial based off of it not being compatible with the existing Harnett County regulatory documents. And the surrounding land use area is low density in nature. Staff is available for questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sykes?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Sykes, I understand you say you add about three hundred and thirty new homes.
Yes, sir. It was re, re-designated to medium density residential. It would put that development into a different category. So it would, it would allow for a, a smaller lot.
Big car per home, that's around seven hundred more cars traveling that road?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, that's, it's, so right now it's about, yeah. Between six, six to two hundred is the, is about a, a year, a year old number. And you know, this, it would be two, two driveways would be required for this development, but they would both come out to NC twenty-seven.
So that might push it up to seven hundred, seven thousand cars a day traveling that road?
Yes, sir.
And what would that, if they put the, all the homes in, what would that do? Drain on the fire departments and rescue squad?
We did reach out to the, to the, to the fire marshal. You know, they were, they were thinking that you know, it's just the obvious stuff, you know, it's hard for them to say because it's, you can't never tell when a call is going to come in, you know, so you have to work it, look at worst case scenario. So obviously, you know, if it's midnight, response time could be okay. If it's right when school lets out, trying to go through, you know, someone directing traffic, school buses, as well as trying to get in maybe on construction time. Certainly issues they were concerned with, issues could, could exist. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the commissioners? All right. At this time I will open the public hearing concerning this request. Anyone that would like to speak for or against, please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Keon with Morrison Ritchie Associates. We're at fifty-six oh five Chapel Hill Road in Raleigh. I'm here representing the applicant and the developer for this. Just wanted to, you know, touch base a little bit and say, you know, we understand some of the concern of adding in a lot of density. That was not our intent with the request. Our intent was to be able to further to, to get the same sort of unit count of what we're trying to get without drastically having to go near these environmentally sensitive areas. We want to, we want to give more open space and allow for more of the environmental area to be preserved and, and keep that away. So, you know, at, at the unit count that Mr. Sykes mentioned at three hundred and thirty units, that's just over one point five units per acre, which is not incredibly dense. So, you know, that's not what the intent here was. It wasn't trying to just pack them in. You know, we, we're still using ten thousand square foot lots, so it's, you know, it'd still be a sizable lot for, for what we're looking at doing. And just to mention too, on the, the traffic situation, you know, we would definitely be working with DOT and their congestion management team to go through. We would be required to do a traffic impact analysis to evaluate the area, evaluate what additional movements are needed on twenty-seven there to help alleviate the concerns of what we're talking about. So, you know, we would be working with, with all the municipalities and, and different review agencies to try to alleviate those concerns. So it's, it wasn't like I said, necessarily something where we're trying to get in here and have five thousand square foot lots, just as many as we can get all across the entire two hundred acres. It was more trying to cluster the, the lots that we can get to, to reduce infrastructure.
How long does it take to do a traffic impact study?
It's usually, it depends on the backlog of the firm, obviously, but typically, you know, we see something in around eight weeks. You know, somewhere around two to three months is what we've been seeing on turnaround times.
I'd almost like to see a traffic impact study before we make a decision. Just my opinion. Any, any questions for? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for or against? Please come forward.
Name is Alan Longman. I'm at two thirty-four Hampton, Hamilton Road in Bonneville. And it's like I said before, you really don't have the capacity for this large type of developments. It was agricultural land, I believe originally, which meant that you're putting a lot of houses in a smaller area no matter how you look at it and putting septic tanks in since you don't have a waste lines out there. It's still going to be a drain on the water. It's going to be a drain on your overcrowded schools. It's going to be a problem with traffic and I believe a study needs to be done, but I think you need to ask more of your developer when they're large like this, like have more affordable housing done as part of the deal. I like to see that as well. When it is approved, okay, you need to catch up with the stuff, the infrastructure first. And we don't want septic tanks. I lived on an island that had septic tanks and the water went bad very quick and became very expensive to clean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longman.
I'm Tom McKay. I'm a resident at eleven ninety-one NC Highway forty-eight, Carriesburg, North Carolina. I am here in your area, but cause I kind of was called out of retirement to come back and help work on some development issues for the growing housing problem we have in North Carolina. And unfortunately, a lot of that has to spread out. Was first attracted to this site because of the presence of the school and I thought possibly that we'd be bringing housing, affordable housing to a needed area and working with Jeremy, our consultant, and discussing how we avoid significant environmental impact by trying to get this amendment pushed through. I certainly understand that is in opposition in a way to your current plan. But I, no matter what you do with this decision, I would encourage you to think about that long range plan because North Carolina is undergoing such a strain on its, on its growth and Harnett County is certainly feeling its part of that. I also thought that maybe having housing that close to the school might actually decrease some traffic. I'm sure it will increase some, but I was hoping to have a housing closer to a school might be an asset. And obviously, the traffic study is an important part of that. That is the study that determines what the impact will be. We would certainly be open to continuing a public hearing if that's what you'd like to do to get that study in hand. It'll give us some time to evaluate and try to get through some of the issues that we were trying to get on the table about how it helps us to stay out of some environmentally sensitive areas and certainly want to be respectful of this board and this county. Thank you very much.
Mr. McKay, you, you mentioned your intent or your thoughts were to provide some affordable housing in that area. I guess affordable housing is subjective.
Yes, it is.
What, give me an idea of what you're thinking about there.
Well, the houses that we're proposing to build there will be as affordable as we can be without getting into any low income housing. can be without getting into any low-income housing tax credits or any programs like that. Um, and that is such a moving target, now hopefully, the current economy has moderated that some, but the ones that I've been working on in Harnett County personally, um, have tried to start in the two seventy-five range and move up from there a little bit as the market predicts. It's just so hard nowadays with lumber cost and, and things to, to get them down where they used to be, uh, but especially with providing, uh, the services, public services, and we will invest a lot in trying to help improve those services in that area, not just tax what's already there, but try to bring some improvement to it if we can.
Thanks, sir. Any, uh, any other questions for Mr. McKay while he's here? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, wish to speak for or against this project? Seeing no one move to come forward, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board what is their, what, what are their thoughts, what's their desire?
Mr. Chairman, based on Mr. McKay's comments, um, about, uh, possibly looking further at this, uh, and possibly completing that study, uh, and also the fact that the commissioner represents that district is not with us tonight, I would move that we table this request until such time as, uh, we can have that further information that you would be willing to provide for us, and then we have, uh, have the, uh, commissioner who represents that district with us as well.
Mr. Chairman? Can we leave it open in, excuse me, can we leave it open-ended like that, or do we have to put a date on it?
You can defer consideration, you don't have to put a date on it, I think the key would be is whether you're tabling it with a continuation of the public hearing to allow these other facts to come in, or whether you're closing the public hearing today, so, are you deferring the public hearing, or are you deferring your decision?
That, that the, this item, um, if I understood Commissioner Matthews correctly, he, he made a motion to table it until they could do the traffic study and until Commissioner Nickel would be here.
And I, I think my, if, if it fits that, um, we would close the public hearing, but we would, uh, discuss this in a work session, once we have our further information, then later make the final decision, if that works with what you, what we have to abide by here.
That would, that would be fine, so you're closing the public hearing, deferring consideration, but you don't have to s- set a date specific, because you're-
Okay.
You're not sure when you get that traffic analysis report in.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would make a motion that we deny this based on the information that we got from the planning board, and concerning of the environment and the traffic out there.
We, we've got a motion, uh, on the floor for, uh, to table this, we have to vote on that first.
He didn't make a motion, he said he would suggest.
No, I, I did ma, I did move that we table it, yes, ma'am.
I'll second that. Okay, so, all right, so we, we, being procedurally correct, we have to vote on that motion, we have a motion and a second, uh, we have to vote on that before we can entertain any other motion. That being said, all in favor of tabling that motion, um, this, uh, request until such time as you have your ta, uh, traffic impact, uh, analysis done, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
Okay, um, so it's tabled, uh, the vote was three to one.
All right. Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Whereas I am in favor of affordable homes being built in this county, but I, um, I appreciate and I take the, the information and the decision from the planning board very serious, so that's all I gotta say.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. All right, um, moving along to county manager's report, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, um, you have a couple of reports in your packet related to the public health activities and the veteran services, um, the other item that I have is to mention that our space needs study will kick off, we'll have our kickoff meeting August twenty-fourth, and then we'll have a stakeholder meeting probably within a week or two after that. This study will be analyzing our needs for space in our variety of buildings, other than really, other than this building, and looking at a number of things as it relates to parole and probation, whether that, what their needs are, where we might be able to move them, um, we're looking at spaces in our other buildings and availability as we move some people around with the intention that in the future, um, you know, our economic development department will move out to the airport, that'll make some space available, so really trying to see that we maximize the space that we have in our various buildings and determine if we have any needs for new spaces to be built in the future so we can do, make the right decisions as it comes to our, our, our public, our capital improvements projects. That's all I have.
All right, any, uh, any new business?
No, sir.
Anything from the commissioners? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion and second, all in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We are adjourned.